I'd like to bring the Albert Gallant work session to order. Is this okay?
Okay, welcome everybody to April's work session. And we will start off with principals. Do we have board any questions for any of the principals in attendance? Or do I just have their packet that you submitted?
I have a general question about maintenance concerns that the principals may have. Are there any principals here that have any maintenance issues in their building that needs addressing? I knew that, I believe that it was from Mason Town that there were some questions about maintenance issues, but I'm sorry, I don't remember specifically about any others. Were there?
Well, I haven't had a chance.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Dillon?
Before we go off front, you know, we did get a guy from Point Mary that he was supposed to have submitted an estimate. I don't know if Mr. Cheslow and the gentleman contacted one another, so.
That's been an ongoing issue for several years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, now's the time. In order to take care of it this year, before we get back to file, we need to have that board back.
I know, I believe.
So we can take care of it.
I believe Mr. Cheslow, he is not here, he's off today with the flu, but I believe, as Mr. Dillon said, he had any contact with the gentleman about doing some work. And was that painting Zach or was that putting metal underneath it?
I think that's putting metal. He was thinking about scraping the paint off because Anthony George is naming him a safety code. He does asbestos removal and also lead paint removal. He said it looks as if it would be cheaper to encapsulate everything with metal. So, that's about it.
And that's fine. I don't really care how they address the issue, but this has been at least a year that we've talked about it and the problem was there for a period of time before that.
Yeah.
And here we are, we're in April, there should be, as Mrs. Swainy said, there should be a plan, a maintenance plan for summer projects presented to the board and not wait until June or July and we here to worry well if it's too late to get it done. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I believe this can't go past May. We have to have a decision made. And I'm going to look now, since we're talking about a little bit of maintenance, the steel coating. I know we're not probably going to be able to do anything about it this month again, but by next month, we need to have something that we need to vote on where it needs done and who can do it.
I want to say there was something in the packet about.
They have this specification which is so.
I can have Mr. Cheslow come Wednesday night. As I said, he's was off today and I know he's attached to me that he has the flu, so, but I can have him come Wednesday night to answer questions on the steel coating package he has.
Well, if everyone's already back, because I think we really need to do one just by May. We need to know who or what lots we're doing and so we can get it done.
Oh, it needs to be done for graduation, so.
No, it won't be done for that.
It won't be done before.
They wouldn't start when you have to go out to graduation.
Especially up. I think around the high school is not that bad. I mean, I want him to tell us where, what needs done first, what's going to be addressed.
Well, they have it down there.
Did I miss it?
I forgot, Northern Meadow and Park.
Okay, we need to put it out. Okay, I'm getting this.
We need to make sure that the gym floor doesn't get lost also.
Yes, yes, that needs to be taken care of.
That's another. I could touch base with Mr. Hutchinson and Dwayne. Mason Town, is it with the clocks?
Yes.
The clocks?
Yeah.
I know that Mr. Cheslow and Mrs. Hunt have been talking and the gentleman from Semplex has been contacted, I believe, almost weekly to try to schedule him to come update clocks and correct what needs corrected. My understanding, the problem with Semplex, I guess they were supposed to do something with the fire alarm systems. They did not get the work and they did not want to come out for just a clock for like 750 bucks, whatever somebody else was going to be doing the fire alarm work. So it has been, from my communication with Bill and Lisa, that's been the holdup on the clocks. And I did talk with Bill and Lisa Friday in regards to possibly if we can't get those clocks fixed, to replace it with battery operated clocks, so they had clocks at the school to function. So, but Bill can elaborate on that and Mrs. Hunt. I know Mrs. Hunt will be here Wednesday night with students she's presenting, she is not in attendance this evening, but if Bill's here Wednesday, you can ask him if he heard back from Semplexes last week and if they're going to be coming to fix those clocks. But as far as the gym floor, Mr. Hutchinson, Mr. Dupont, Mr. Cheslow, myself did go down and looked at the gym floor. If you recall, last year, the gym floor, whenever they took it all the way down with the bare wood, redid the graphics, the one coat finish they put on it, there was discoloration, it was yellow. We weren't happy with the finished product. We did speak with the gentleman, is it SNS, Dwayne?
Yes.
And he said that he could either redo the entire floor, take it down to the sand and redo all the graphics, redo the finish, or he would come back and recoat the floor for the next four years free of charge. And the reason we went and looked at it last week, there's a lot of the yellow in that finish has blended, it's disappeared, and you can't see where the yellow was on the main part of the gym floor map. Now, over by the sound system and bleachers, when the bleachers were poured out, you wouldn't see it, but it's close to the wall, it's still pretty yellow in that area. And we felt that it might be better this time for the board, the district to have them committed to do four years of free recoating. And they would top sand it and take the dirt and stuff that was out and just recoat it. And that will be done free of charge by that company for the next four years versus taking it all the way back down to the bare wood again. And then next year, we'd have, we'd be having to repay to have it top coated every year. So that was an option. And I believe Mr. Cheslow did call and spoke to the representative from that company and he said that that would be fine, but Mr. Cheslow said he would like to be present with Mr. Dupont whenever they are actually building the floor to make sure that the application process is being done correctly. So that's, did I cover it all guys?
I think you're looking at, you're looking at a two day span compared to a two week span if you go down, if you redo the whole thing. I think it's approximately 10 days, two weeks, 10 to 14 days on the other one to take the dirt out and seal it is about two days, three days.
I suppose we should go that way.
So we could add to the agenda for Wednesday to move forward with having the SNS company come in and top sand it and recoat it for the next four years versus having to take it all the way down to the bare wood, starting the whole process.
They need to have the original company do it. I mean, I'm only, I mean, I'm maybe a little naive here, but why wouldn't we make them make it right though? What it should have been.
That's what we're doing, but remember, we didn't pay, we didn't pay them for the job they did because it was, the finish was blocked.
If they paved that down, would that yellow come out?
Most of the yellow, the yellow.
You've got to look pretty hard, I mean, you've got to look.
I didn't, I never noticed.
You've got to look pretty good now. I noticed it, I mean, initially, and I thought it was pretty bad. As I go in there now, you have to really, really look, especially when no one's on it, to notice. It's probably very hard to see through the naked eye if you're not looking for it.
When they sand this down, if we do go for that four year plan, that will disappear?
No, it won't, it won't, no. They'll take the coat off and then recoat it. The other end that we discussed was if they would take it all the way down, what are you going to get this time? It is kind of, you know, right now, it does look okay, in my opinion. So to get the four years, if they're going to recoat it.
What's the annual cost of the recoating?
I want to say it was approximately like $4,000.
I think it was $4,000 over, yeah.
Between $4,000 and $5,000, I believe.
So you have good savings?
Yeah. Over the four year period, I think initially.
For the first job, so. Yeah, we initially did the whole floor, sanded all the way down, restrated, repainted. I think it comes to about $20,000 or $25,000 probably.
But we didn't pay for that, right?
Correct, correct.
So. So wait a second, so if we, if we go with the option that we don't, that they're going to recoat it for the four years, do we then have to pay them for the original jobs that they did?
I don't believe, I mean, whenever we talked to the gentleman last year, we didn't pay him at all because it wasn't satisfactory to our expectations. I mean, there was a lot of yellow over the floor.
So they're willing to eat that on top of coming back the next four years?
From my understanding, with our discussions with him, last year after the floor was completed, that was the understanding.
Excuse me for a second, I think we're misunderstanding a little bit. We initially got that floor done and we paid that money upfront, the $25,000.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Last year, they came in and they resealed it, top sealed it, that's when the discoloration came.
And that's when they used a different product. Correct, the first year they did, it was beautiful. There were no yellow marks in it. They come back the second year, recoat it, use a different product coating the floor, that's when we noticed the yellow. That's why it was thought on their end of, was it something we cleaned it with? What happened? We went with all their recommendations. Therefore, then, we didn't pay for coating, yes, yes.
So we didn't pay them approximately $4,000?
Correct, correct, yes.
But there was also, the gentleman, I believe, refused to sign a performance bond.
That was for the redo, yes, that was for the redoing of the whole thing. Correct, Mr. Dun.
Again, yeah.
I believe so.
This is quote unquote a freebie, but we're getting this guy to do it that refused to sign a performance bond initially.
I believe so.
Oh, I can add, all right.
Now, when do we do this?
We were looking at soon as after graduation.
Okay. Plus, we have.
Remember, we get the call, rather group come in.
Correct.
Two weeks. I think you should go after that because they're going to be using our gym and staying there for two full weeks.
Correct.
Doing that pure work. And then when the district coming in and call, I think we should wait.
Yeah.
Be honest with us.
I agree.
Dwayne, if we can.
When does that start, you know, by June?
Cheslow and the main office knows, but they'll be here for two weeks. I think the first two weeks in June.
That's what I agree. And they'll actually be here one week prior to set up and get ready for that, so.
So you're saying three weeks.
Yeah, it's.
Because we're providing for then the shower, eat breakfast and sleep here, right?
Yes.
They're going to go out and come back and eat. On Wednesday, they're going to go somewhere else because we have 150 people in the district. It's going to be serviced by these juice because I've talked to that group.
That's correct.
So it's going to help a lot of Al, but yeah.
Correct. Okay.
Just a little tidbit.
That's good enough. You've got people wanting to use the gym for athletics or something.
Mr. Peg, I have one more question on the maintenance report for the building. On the back page, four minutes down, there was a pump that had burst and they lost light hall. Is that in the recently repaired?
Yes, that's where we had, the high school was, we had some rooms that were cold and, what was that, two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago on a Monday.
Where we had, some of the classrooms were 70 degrees, some were 71, some were 65, some were, we had a few that were low 60s and maybe four or five of them were probably in the upper 50s. And that was due to there being a loss of supply call, maintenance, Mr. Cheslow and I think all four maintenance guys were able to find and correct the problem and it was fixed like part of the back.
So this wasn't from the building where we recently had that repaired?
Down in south. In south, no. This was at the high school.
It didn't read on here where it was located.
Oh, I'm not sure how many gallons that they put in the high school after, I'm not sure how many gallons they had put in or what they did to correct it. I know that they all, the whole maintenance crew were there correcting it and found the, I guess, problem and corrected, but I don't know how much light hall they had to put in. Any other questions for any of the building principals? Okay, Mr. Dupont, anything else with athletics?
Not a lot, here's a couple of hires we're looking to do on the agenda. And just getting through spring sports right now, the weather is a lot better than it was last year. Full on weather, canceled a couple of games. That's all I have for this time.
Any questions for Mr. Dupont?
Dwayne, refresh my memory, please.
Okay.
Volunteer coaches.
Yes.
We're, that's pretty standard now?
Yes, yes. And everybody that's on the list has been, they've turned all their information in and have been structured.
Can you describe briefly the vetting process? I mean, is this, are these positions opened up to everybody within the district and then can you just explain that process to me so I understand it?
Yes, we post the head coaching positions throughout the district. We feel that we need to post them into the newspapers and we do so. Assistant coaching positions normally are not posted unless we absolutely need them posted, then we post them.
So all of the head coaching positions that are for hire this week, that would have been posted district wide?
Yes.
Okay, so what happens then if you have multiple people that come forward and are interested in one of those coaching positions?
Well, then we'll have to do it.
Okay.
For the head coach?
Yes.
Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a couple of head coaching positions and I just was curious in terms of, you know, are there more people that have applied than what's on our list?
No.
Any other questions for Mr. Dupont? Thank you, Dwayne. Maintenance, Mr. Cheslow, as I said, is not here tonight and I can't have him come Wednesday night to answer any questions that the board. Okay.
Chris, what, what, can I get back to Dwayne before we are cut? The tarp out here, did, we ever get the machine or something that we were supposed to get? Yes, we got a brand new sweeping machine, approximately, I think it's like $8,500 or so. Yes, we did get that.
Have we used it at all yet?
No, I had a company come back in and they were down there doing some work and they're going to come back in once the weather gets drier, that we have a lot of, I guess, maybe in late May, June, when it's not raining out as much, they're going to come back in and they're going to level everything off, do a complete sweep of field.
Okay.
He suggested that we not do anything until they come back in.
Mr. Peg, it's Mr. Dunbar back to Dwayne. I have one, another question.
Okay, sure.
How did the PSSAs go? Did you see any issues or anything that could be better for next time around? Anybody have any input?
I would say today was our first day of testing and everything seemed to be okay in my building. You know, we tried to put the kids in the best testing environment for them and, you know, just encourage them to be at school daily on time and do their best.
Is there any reason why we have to have them this week?
The state dictates the testing window and, you know, there is wisdom, they planned the testing window this year in the middle of Easter.
Yeah.
And as intended, the meetings, the intermediate units brought my attention through some other districts that they had the opportunity to change the window. But that didn't extend to everyone. It was sort of to hear about it, do it, and then after the fact, no more, people were allowed to change their window. Although, I did try to attempt to change the window, but according to our principal response, it was their opinion. And they said, just stick with the window, everybody wants it to be the way that it was before, they're, you know, in the game, it's ready to go. So we did not change our window, so we will be doing English this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Thursday, they do some makeups. We will come back from Easter. We will have basically a week of just getting it back together, we'll do some preparation. Then the following week, the last week of April, they will do two days for math and then two days for science. And apparently this year, as long as the majority of the tests are sent back by May 3rd, we will have results by May 31st, which I'm anxious to see if that happens. If it does, that would be great because that helps us with planning then for next year with groups and figuring out where kids need to be and how their needs to be met. But I'm not saying that, I'm not sure that that's going to really happen.
I think you could wear it though.
Another question for the principals. Are you having enough staff to meet the accommodations for the students? I know you have to move things around and has that been a challenge?
It's always a challenge, every year's a challenge. It's chess match.
At least make it work.
Yeah. We're used to it. We know we're looking.
What are the keystone tests in May?
Yes.
How many people offed it out, those keystone tests? Do you know offhand?
I can probably count on one hand.
Really? Not that many.
Six, five. Five, I got a lot of the other day.
Because when they offed out, that does hurt the school district.
Correct.
I got two questions.
I'm just going to add.
Someone out off child, that child scored, is it a zero?
Yeah, it's not counted.
So that hurts our district?
I thought there was a difference between if they just refused to take it and if they opted out. I was explaining to me by administrator once that if you opt out of your child for philosophical religious purposes, there's a marked difference between refusing to take it and opting them out. And it was better for the school if they were opted out rather than just refusing. So I explained to them.
Right, well, it has to be done before, because of religious reasons or there's a box to check again.
But my understanding is that's just.
But it doesn't count, it doesn't, it just, the kid's not tested.
Right, whereas, whereas just a refusal, well, that one through the opt out process is what hurts the school.
It's a zero, yes, it's the population.
Yeah, so I don't want there to be misconception that if you go through the proper steps to opt out your child, that it hurts the school, because my understanding is that's not true. I opt out my kids.
You have to, you have to come and review it, the two week window prior to review it and statewide.
My second question is, is it going to be two weeks later next year, the test key? I read somewhere that it's not going to be.
I don't, I don't know, it comes out of Mrs. Beazak's head from state, on their end of the testing window, which is for two weeks.
It'll still be around the same time next year, I guess.
It usually is at the same time. This year, we're up, it's a little different because we're getting out May 31st, which we're not accustomed to.
With the opening out, is there a form, it has to be?
Yeah.
It's a procedure that is established in the district and when they come to monitor, they will.
And the parent, the child just can't come by?
No, no, no.
It has to be done by that.
Yep, there's a process, parent has to come in.
What does the child do during the school day?
We provide alternative worthy enriching academic activity for all students that opt out.
Mr. Hutchinson, while you're on the hot seat, let's go back to the football field and graduation. What are your plans for graduation as it relates to the football field and is the football field suitable at this present time?
It is, the repairs that they're looking to do, the sand underneath has to be dry for the repairs, the things that they're going to do, leveled out. But as of right now, my plans are to hold graduation outside again, but it will be, football field should be ready. I mean, there should be no forms about that.
What date do we have now? What's the basis?
Friday, 31st.
Say it again.
Friday, 31st of May is graduation as of today.
Mr. Hutchinson, just a quick question, if we have a lot of rain for Friday for the backup plan, be Saturday? You and I already talked about a backup plan.
Right, but last time, when we discussed it was stick with the date, if it is rain, go to the gym. I think rather than change it and try to put it together on a Saturday, last time I spoke to the board, you know, we thought we would go on that day regardless. But I'm open for suggestions if you want to have a backup date and go to Saturday if you can, or if we can stick to Friday and put it in the gym like it was in the past. I think, I don't know, how many years we've been outside?
Two.
Two?
Two.
Last year was excellent. I don't know who you have connections with, but, you know, it was just really excellent. I know you have nothing to do with the parking areas as they've been run over and dug up and they've been sued. Do you anticipate that being a problem?
I'm concerned. I did speak to Mr. Cheslow last week and he had the guy come back out and fill the, where the road is torn up. I feel pretty confident, I know last year, we didn't park in that back field because of the grass and so that kind of was a challenge. We filled up the lawn as much as possible and then we're in radio communications to where to direct the other traffic. This year, depending on the weather, we'll be able to use that on the backside by the field, hopefully for additional parking that we didn't use because of the fresh planted grass last year. That should help alleviate some of the parking.
Maybe we could shuttle them in.
We did provide four shovels last year, then we bring them back and forth. You know, on the other end, we're providing six graduation tickets, top of the other districts, local and afar, that's a lot of tickets for one individual. That is a ton, some districts that I've reached out to provide two. You know, we're in a process now that we provide you with four. If you would like to request two more additional tickets, once those four tickets have cycled through to everyone, then you request through a letter to the office that you would like an additional two tickets. I would say the majority of them take those two additional tickets. So to be offering a student, six members of your family to attend a graduation, I feel that's pretty, you know, pretty beneficial on our part as a district, to the student, obviously, graduating soon.
You know, while we're talking about parking, I'm going to bring up a lot of the con. When the students, like, they, sometimes they get there late, like in Port, okay? They're parking clear over here and they're having to walk all that way. And I don't know if there's any way we could remedy that. I mean, it's not my con, it's not, you know, it's their con.
And no matter how long, how many times you tell them, don't come till three, I mean, it's like Kenny Chesley concert, they're there at noon, you know, the parents and everybody.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is there any way we could give the students first?
We talked this year about having maybe a drop off in the band line to have them come in there. We do have two new advisors that have taken over from the past advisor who left. So we are talking about the parking and I agree with you, some of them have dropped a long way.
They have to walk in there sometimes in their dresses, but that's awful.
I agree, I agree, I agree. I'll look at it, I do know, we discussed it about parking plans for the students, so I will look into that.
And then I think last year was raining and someone wouldn't let them in to even go into the front part of the gym. I don't think that's appropriate. It's raining, they should, they should be let in.
And that's for the grand march, correct?
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
Okay. I think we should have a makeup day and try to keep it outside.
I mean, I mean, whatever you're outside, we'll make it work.
You know, I actually lean the other way, I think there's people coming from out town sometimes and sometimes these kids have parents that don't live around here, I know that's an exception, but I mean, I think Mr. Hutchinson had a good point when he said, you know what, keep it that day for planning purposes, that's my personal view, that a lot of people have been juggling a lot of things to make sure six people are available on a particular day.
I'm just saying, this rain, if you're going to have everything set up in that gym, that means you're up.
I hope to make that call like I've done the last few years and I'll, I'll live or die with it and go from there and put it on my shoulders, but, you know, if I feel there, you know, with some conversation with Mr. Peg and Mrs. Beazak and everyone, we'll go from there. Remember, the first year, we put it together that Friday, or I think that Thursday night.
The air conditioning went out or something.
Yes.
But you did a good job last year because that's the most I've ever seen anybody at graduation.
Thank you.
It was full. Everybody enjoyed themselves, it didn't look like there was any problems at all.
Yeah, it went over pretty smoothly and hopefully.
Had beautiful weather, we've had beautiful sunsets.
People did come out.
Yep.
I think Mr. Howard has a point about.
I think Mr. Howard has a point about extending it possibly to Saturday, and again, because graduation is on Friday.
Right.
I understand what, what Mrs. Cribbly is saying, because it is difficult to juggle, but it's on a Friday night and you're, you're just looking at a weekend, which, you know, work schedules for most people would not be adversely affected. I just think it's a lot easier from the administration standpoint to know that, you know, they can plan for it to be outside and you don't have to split your resources into the gym versus the outside too, but.
As I said, I'll.
Just do it as well as last year.
I'll try, I'll try. I'll try my best.
Well, I agree too, because if you go on a Saturday, they still have the travel day back somewhere on Sunday. As long as we can hit it on Friday and Saturday, I think we're okay.
What do you do if it rains, go Friday and Saturday?
We'd go Friday, Saturday and inside.
Inside.
Because they're traveling, they have to get back to work and things.
It won't be as hot Saturday morning either, we did it two days.
Well, that would be the next question, if we do put it, before I put the tickets and start printing, if you all want to decide, make a decision, and that will go with the time. If, if we don't go on a Friday evening at six when the doors open, then we can make an arrangement to go Saturday, if you want to go Saturday afternoon, evening. That can be discussed as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Troy, food service?
Thank you, Mrs. Peg. Other than what's in my board record, I really have nothing to discuss. I am moving forward with the summer feeding program, but we have a patient that's tomorrow. It's more teased than I thought, a lot of training going on. We are up for review with the CEP, Community Inadequability Provision. We have those numbers pulled as of first of April and I'll be submitting those to PDE and MAG for approval. Just moving along, certainly it's MAG. You guys have any?
Any questions for Mr. Bowden? Thank you, Troy. Technology, Mr. Bowden.
Hello, everyone. Kind of in the same mode as Troy, don't have a lot outside of what's encompassed in my board report, just getting ready for end of year stuff. Have a lot going on this summer, planned for graduation, preparation, scheduling, preparation with the kids. That's it, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Adam, you have something for executive session, Mr. Bowden, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mrs. Breckich, special way?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. We're finished with passing test students, we offered a new test for our high school students. All of the students have returned to the state and all of the videos have been uploaded. I apologize for my board report being late for that, I failed a few of you, that's the reason why it was a little cumbersome than I thought. So I want to thank Diana Lapp, Jared Clisco, and Sheri Dunham, they helped a bit handy this week and it's important to get that job done, but it is finished. We are in IUP season very deeply, it just seems like there's a lot of IUPs that are coming due in April, beginning of May, so it's a pretty busy runaround for both Sheri and myself, we're all over the place. So if you ever need us or we're not in the office, if we're one of those schools, you can probably track us down with one of the secretaries if you ever need to speak to us. We have an LDA meeting tomorrow, I do, Sheri and I are both attending, and there's a meeting coming up in the pack beginning of May, has to do with expulsions and suspensions of special education students. I'm gonna be talking to Mr. Peg about possibility of myself, maybe one of the principals attending that meeting. That's, that's about it right now, getting ready for ESY, our big quarter of the year with the states at the end of the month, and we'll come here from teachers as to those that are eligible. And if you have any questions for me, that's really all I have.
Any questions for Mrs. Breckich?
No, just to let you know, both Mr. Clisco and Mrs. Breckich and Mr. Dunham, we are going to look carefully at the numbers and look at the staff come June.
And Mr. Peg and Mrs. Dunham and I did have a discussion about that today too, and we're, you know, trying to figure out where everything's going live at the beginning of the school year. Do a massive testing list right now, it's very difficult to predict, we couldn't qualify them yet, but we're working on it.
Any other questions for Mrs. Breckich? If Mrs. Dunham is not here, she may be in attendance Wednesday nights, and she isn't here this evening. Elementary, federal curriculum testing, Mrs. Bezak?
Yes, like the others, majority of everything is in the board report. There are a few items I wanted to highlight, one of which, we had a nice event, federal coordinator to pay county and planning event, it was held at Lakeside for our parents representing our school district. We had a nice table, myself and Mr. Peg attended. We had representatives from all the elementary schools, they were introducing information about coding and secure usage in schools, and they found that to be beneficial, so it was a nice time to share some ideas. They got to meet together to share ideas, what's happening among the schools themselves. So again, that was, that was a nice event. Also, this team that we, we built in the district is we organized a pseudo people STEM team, we are meeting to talk about where we are in our technological advances as far as destruction go, what we're using in the classroom, not so much the hardware or the networking, but more or less what's happening rigorally with regard to bringing in STEM concepts into all the classrooms. We have a good deal going on in our elementary schools. We have managed to have, and kudos to Mr. Burkshaw, who just sent me an email that he was accepted to be trained for your charters this summer, AIU with encoding. So he will be introducing the coding program at the high school level. We are working to figure out how we can merge what's happening at the elementary and what's happening at the high school and make it happen at the middle school. So again, not only the STEM team involved, with some input from constituents, from the teachers from both the middle schools need to meet with us also and tell us about the advances in the middle school's schedule, how and what maybe it could be modified so maybe you can fit these types of courses and open doors up for more opportunity for middle school. It's tending to be a very assessment-based schedule and just don't have a lot of opportunity to, to take other classes due to the nature of, due to the nature of schedule. So we're organizing, jumping in to exploring some of those options and how we can be creative at the middle school so that from the elementary or high school, we have that met in the middle. So I mentioned Mr. Burkshaw, I'd also like to take a second to mention, she just sent me an email on Friday, so it isn't necessarily in the packet, but Noel Petron, who is our technological person, stays in Mason Town, and I take it back, she's at FABO in Mason Town. She is the, she teaches the computer program in the coding. She got accepted, she had applied for a grant, got accepted through Rolls Royce Corporation. So she will be going to Arizona for a week and she has everything paid for, nothing. She will be working with specialists from current email at MIT, Harvard, and she will hopefully get to bring back a lot more innovative things that, you know, that we're doing, building on what we're doing. And it's nice because then you can look at some of the Title IV money, which hopefully it doesn't get cut through the federal budget, but that's the money that I can use federally to fund some of those initiatives, because it's specific for innovations in education. So it's a little bit of money, but it's, it's there, so that's a good thing. So like you said, we have these things going on, this project, we address the project lead weight, it's going to be in our elementary starting now, so that connects, again, high school with the elementary. But again, we do have a real school which will go for that certification, I'm sure he's going to elaborate on that. But again, it's trying to make that, that progression to work all through our schools. And again, we have some good things coming, it's very nice to see the parents who they were listening and turning around and saying, we do that already, we do that, and we did, so it's kind of nice to hear that. So again, I just wanted to take a second and congratulate Mr. Burkshaw and Miss Petron, you know, on their initiative to look for these programs and to get themselves approved and accepted into them. So that's good for our district. Other than that, that's it.
Any questions for Mrs. Bezak?
Yes, Mrs. Bezak, has there been any update on, oh, with the students going into kindergarten? I think we have talked about that before.
Well, we are having a transition meeting May, I don't know the date right now, I'm calling it Florida. There is, is a county transition meeting that's going to take place, it's through the United Way, and so our team will go and other districts will also go. Hopefully that will be one of the topics we discussed again, we'll be perfect. And I just got an invite and I don't know a lot about attending the governor's visit to, with regard to transition, so hopefully I'll be able to go to that and see, you know, where we are, where we stand. But again, we are going to offer this summer to, to mining schools, and I guess I shouldn't be saying this to you all now, in case you do get a call, we only have a small, limited amount of money from a grant from the United Way. So we are mining schools, so we're offering that kinder camp that will be offered for three days, it will be promoted during kindergarten registration, and we are encouraging the parents to come. And if they all can come, that's fine, but we are able to get transportation, we're able to get a nurse to be there. Mr. Bowden is able to, hopefully everything gets approved, they'll get lunch and a snack. And again, it's a nine to two day where they will get to spend three days of help with that transition again. If it works, then we'll look at where we can get money, we'll recreate it, and we'll try to do it all five elementaries. But again, the keys, you know, there are target areas that are economically disadvantaged in those two schools. So we are going to have that, and again, we'll look and see if we did that longer or if we did it like in a cyclic basis, we want kids to get involved, because that could impact our school's scores, so, or just their performance by the beginning of the school year when they start getting baseline evaluated. So we're thinking in terms of that, we have some strategies, but again, it's, it's all new. This is just something new, a new strategy that we're looking to get to get the kids where they need to be mid-year kindergarten.
Any other questions for Mrs. Bezak?
I just would like to say, saying, I really appreciate all your hard work with all the programs you initiate and all the follow through, all that you do. I mean, that says a lot for the school district, doesn't it?
We have very good elementary. We have very good principals.
Yes.
I specifically more or less worked with the elementary, that I am in my past, be very blessed to have, you know, very good principals to follow through and really good teachers that have bought into it, into these programs.
Well, your effort.
So hopefully that continues and we can go, I think the key is the follow through, don't do a bunch of things, take a couple of things and just zero in on them and then get that out of the way and then move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bezak. Secondary, high school principal, secondary, curriculum, Mr. Hutchinson?
You have in the packet, the high school course additions that I asked, that when we, when you're looking them over, what stipulations if the teachers are available and there are a number of kids that are interested in taking it, that hopefully we can make those courses work. Adding to that, I would ask for your approval, I just got notified on Friday that Mrs. Wolf, one of our social studies teachers, applied for college and high school psychology and was accepted. So with your approval, if you would add that to the course that you have, she will, she will be certified through PIT for students who would like to take college and high school psychology course, which will end up being a three-credit PIT course. However, the only hiccup we have are the books that are required for the class, which are roughly about 140 a book. I would like to look, purchase a class set, I just started looking at it today, they give you about four different books that you can select, however, they're roughly all about that same price. So that would add another college and high school class, college and high school class to Albert Galvin High School. And I think that's it. I would like to mention or give you a brief, just an outline, myself, Mrs. Breckich, and Mrs. Dunham, and Mr. Peg attended that ATSI training, which the high school got targeted for its learning support population. This is a timeline with, the ATSI stands for Additional Target Support Improvement. So currently we are working with the IU, along with Mr. Dave Dunham, with the IU to develop an improvement plan for our learning support students. We did get dinged on English, math, and attendance. This is just a timeline for you all to look at. There's another part that if you were grouped in a CSI that you get funding, we, luckily we're not in that group. So the timeline that I will be presenting to you, hopefully, probably in May, and it has to be on review for 28 days, and I need a board president's signature and then all of you can review it, and we'll put that plan in place starting July first of this year. It's going back on two years of rolling data, so we're using the data from '16, '17. And then the following year, the next year, we'll put a plan in place. We're dealing with attendance, how to raise our math scores and our English scores. So when you hear the ATSI, I just wanted you to have an idea or guideline of the plan and the implementation process of where, what will be coming. And I think that's, that's it.
If there's any questions? The board hasn't formally adopted the plan, correct?
Yes, the board does.
That's what you're scheduling for May?
Correct, it'll be May, yeah, it has to be on, it has to be ready to go, Mr. Price, by July first. It does not have to be submitted to PDE at this time, thanks for change, but as of right now, you all need to approve it and then we'll put the plan in place.
Mr. Hutchinson, back on the new course curriculum, when will you have an idea of what courses interest the students that, or which ones will be forward?
As, as they're starting to go, I have the guidance counselor going into the classrooms now, just talking about the new courses, other than the CHS that I just got notified on Friday, but I hope to get some numbers and then make some decisions. However, some of those teachers that are interested in some of those courses have other core classes or are teaching six classes, so if that teacher is, depending on the numbers, I know the freshman class coming up is about 15 more students than this current freshman class. So what I'll look at is if that teacher is teaching a sophomore class, they may have a period open where one of those electors would fit in. So hopefully by the next couple of weeks, I'll have a better idea.
When will you begin scheduling?
We started, just getting the counselors in there. We're looking at the Sapphire piece, because the Sapphire piece, the student can log onto the Chromebook with the teacher's recommendations, schedule and then submit it, and then we'll start getting the numbers. So myself and Mr. Bowden have talked with the guidance counselors. After that, Sapphire will come back in and go over it again with the counselors, so I'd like to get it done, hopefully in the next few weeks.
So then by the May meeting, you should know something more definite about the classes?
I would hope so, yeah, I would hope so. I would hope to say, here's what I have to offer, here's the listing of the classes that we made, but I also, I'm going to tell the teachers that, you know, if it didn't work out this year, you know, obviously I'll keep this list and hopefully present it for next year if something opens up.
Would it be a class enrollment minimum?
Ten, I'm looking for ten, I'm looking for ten, twelve to, to, you know, and these are semester courses, so that means I got to garner ten or twelve for the following semester. That's what I'd like to keep that, yes, that's what I'm looking for.
Are these like, are classes in general, are they more academic? Are there some general classes for the students that aren't so much interest, like they go to attend CTI? Are there other general classes for them?
Yes, yes, yes.
Not so academically heavy?
Correct, correct. Though we currently have, absolutely, yes.
A lot of your kids that go to the CTI schools, they don't.
They don't have the opportunity to take any of your.
The greater likelihood is the CTI.
Right, right. And so other than the gym, Mr. Bowden, the gym and the health, which they need is a state requirement.
Do they just take that once, like, they get a CTI, do they take that as a senior, then health and phys ed, or just one time?
Usually we haven't taken it the freshman year and get it out of the way. So then when their CTI come back, when they come back from the CTI, that opens up their sophomore, junior, senior year, if they would like to elect them. But for the most part, their four core classes take up the four classes at the high school.
Any questions for Mr. Hutchinson?
Just, I was wondering if we could look into including an economics course with this?
I can, we, we, at the time when I did it, I solicited or asked the teachers, say, is there something you would be interested in teaching? But I thought this year, obviously, I can look in the economics end of it. Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. And also, to piggyback on Mrs. Bezak, we are moving forward with the project lead weight, which each elementary received 30,000. Way, which each elementary received $30,000 for the five elementary schools that we wrote a grant for, and both middle schools, I'm sorry, the elementaries received $20,000, and then both middle schools received $30,000. So that's a two-year grant with Project Lead the Way in Chevron, which will bring in more hands-on things in the science classes. I do have two teachers, one elementary teacher who is going to get trained. She can come back and train the other teachers. And I have one middle school teacher who's going this summer, paid for through the grant to receive the training to come back. So my thought would be the eighth grade students at South, this teacher flip flops, the eighth grade students in North will get the same thing, and those elementaries will be pushing in third, fourth, and fifth. So that's something to add to, as Mrs. Beatzak said, the steam part that we're trying to promote here.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
As a side note, the other high school musical I thought was a very big hit.
Yeah, excellent.
I think most of you have touched that. It was excellent. The performances were outstanding. Cast, crew, all, you know, everybody had a hand in getting that set up deserves, you know, a robust plus. So thank you to all the kids in the high school and everybody supporting the musical.
Transportation, Mr. Parner?
Thank you, Mr. Peg. In addition to my board report, this month I included a breakdown of the van usage for this year and the corresponding savings. And nothing said that's more than the cost of one van. And I'm asking the board to consider on Wednesday, I'm moving to purchase a few more vehicles. It's one of those situations where, yes, it will cost us some money, but you have to put that money out and save this kind of money too. We have one of our vans, our van number three is currently 11 years old, it's got 92,000 miles on it, which isn't a lot of miles. However, it is starting to experience maintenance issues. We probably put $4,000 in it for last year.
Any questions for Mr. Parner?
I have an unrelated question, and I'm just going to throw this out at you. I know I'm catching you by surprise and probably Mr. Peg as well. But is it worth exploring the cost savings of busing all of our children in one bus ride? And I think the schools in Maryland, or at least part of Maryland, do that. Where elementary, junior high, and high school kids all ride together, and I think the reason behind that is a cost savings. Is that something that either you've explored before and ruled out, or something that's worth exploring in the future? And it's obviously, it requires some adjustments in terms of that.
If, Bill, we could chime in together. We have discussed that briefly in the past, but with, like, the districts that I know that do that, they have one campus, and their kids are being transported, dropped off the elementary, dropped off in the middle of the high school. I think Carmichael does that.
West Green does that.
Jefferson or West Green. I think they all do, but their campuses are located at one location. If we would have been, if we'd be fortunate enough to have a high school, a middle and elementary campus, we could do that. If we had a middle and high school campus, we could do that and have two tiers. And that would save fuel, it would probably eliminate a few buses for savings. But the way, the demographics of our district and the layout of it, I don't think we would be able to do that. I mean, kids would be on the bus for, you know, a very long time. Bill, if you could chime in?
I agree with Mr. Peg, and we did look at one of the possibilities, if there was either a new middle school or convert this school to perhaps a six, seven facility, we could do it in two tiers for sure. And that would save a lot of fuel, it would save a minimum of two buses, in my estimation. And additionally, it would let the schools start later, because currently having covered the entire district three times, we're wrapping up tons of miles in that process. So, you know, you've got to cover basically every road three times right now.
I don't, I know, I attended school in Maryland when I was in elementary school, and I know that our elementary school was not close to the junior high or the high school. So I don't know if those schools are, the junior high and high school would be a consolidated school, but I'll check into that. But I think that the, I live in Friendsville, so I know that's a very rural area, but it may be, maybe even if the local people are doing it with campuses, maybe broadening horizons and take a look. I just, anywhere that we can save money, we need to be looking at, so. But how recently have you, have you looked into that?
Three weeks ago.
We had discussion recently, just looking at it, it would, it just wouldn't drive the high school, and like as Bill said, the start times. If we were to have a junior high campus here and a high school campus closely, we would be able to start high school at eight o'clock instead of seven o'clock, and elementary's maybe at nine thirty instead of nine fifteen, back everything up. And it would help with the study on later start times, as well as saving money for the transportation. But I'd say the way our district is set up with a number of elementary, if you have two levels, one high school, it would be, be actually possible.
You do have education experts in the room, but, you know, I've read studies that a later start time is beneficial to these senior high kids. I mean, they're getting up, some of these kids are on buses at 6:00 a.m. And that's, you know, but it's hard for them.
Mr. Parner, I have a question. Mr. Parner and I have talked a couple of times over the last two weeks. My comments are not many as a reproduction of Mr. Parner, because he's been very, very helpful with this. There was an episode where a bus driver used some rather inappropriate language and actions with students that were on his bus at the present time, and the bus contractors, and Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong, the bus contractor's solution to the problem was to give the bus driver a verbal warning.
Those are written recommend.
A written recommend. The language was totally, totally inappropriate for elementary children to hear. His actions were totally inappropriate. And he got a letter in his file, which to me isn't enough to, to change the behavior. And I think we're paying the bus contractor, and we don't have any, any say-so as far as discipline for this type of inappropriate behavior.
Well, without getting into too much of the detail, to try to make the, I guess, the punishment for the crime, so to speak, we had another incident this month, which I did address in my report. That driver was suspended and actually terminated after the battle. So they are following, you know, recommendations. When, after reviewing the video and seeing what led to the outburst from this driver, I guess I would categorize it as a frustration because of a near accident, vehicle pulled out. I mean, he missed in my fight heat.
But the language, what language he uses if somebody cuts him off when he's in his personal vehicle is none of my concern. But whenever he's driving a bus with students of elementary age in it and uses the language that he uses, that's totally inappropriate, and there's no excuse.
Bill's completely out of line, sir. I agree.
Any other questions for Mr. Parner?
Listen, I know, partly how much money have we saved this year with our sports shop?
Sorry to answer. Actually, we've had one more trip added since this list was completed. It's now more than $37,000 for just this year. That's just the school year. And we still haven't got to the crazy, I didn't have that information, so I didn't, I didn't include it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parner. Security, school safety, Chief Bilecki.
I have nothing, and just I'd like the board to ask a question for me.
Okay, Chief, I would like to touch base with you and Jason and the board, just to report, you have the bag scanners that were delivered to set up at the middle schools that have been working out extremely fine. Mr. Dillo and Mr. Plisco?
They're working great. I was in South myself when they ran, when I had an office law. We're running up through South at probably half the time that we were doing when we were checking the bags. And it took the kids some time. They were getting used to it when I was there, second or third day. And I would imagine by now it's moving a little, yeah, they have to move it a little faster. We're getting now, you know, instead of them waiting to be, they're putting the bags on a belt and moving on through.
Can I take, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dillo and Mr. Plisco? When we were checking bags, hand checking, we were using two metal detectors, and I believe with the bag scanner, we were just using one.
Right, that's correct.
And Mr. Hutchinson, at the high school, there was one metal detector that we are not using. We use the two walkthroughs at the main entrance with two bag scanners and one walkthrough with one bag scanner at the student lot, correct?
Correct, that would probably, that would give us three metal detectors as of right now today that we're currently not using.
So those, as we talked briefly last month under safety, those three, as we thought, could be taken and used in the elementaries. That would leave us having to purchase two metal detectors for the elementaries. But in order for someone to monitor those, you know, we would have to look at parent hall monitors for the elementary. We could probably, you know, look at reducing the number of hall monitors at the high school. We'll put one of those at the elementary, since we have Mr. McFormy, who we did make security as well as the trove officer, you know, at the high school. You know, so those are things that, you know, we need to consider for the upcoming school year, not saying they aren't doing it right now, but we do have three metal detectors available that we can put in the elementaries. That would leave us only having to purchase two, which would be less than $10,000. I would say, prayer on $9,000 to two of them, Chief, is that?
I think we pay $3,000. I think you're a little bit sad.
But I'm thinking, though, we would have to have electric, you know, run installed, and that's a cost at the final elementary, because you don't have the electric where you would need to use. So those are, I would look probably not for Wednesday's agenda, but for May's agenda, to look at, you know, putting that on in May's agenda, to purchase two additional walkthroughs and consider hiring hall monitors for the elementaries. Anything else under security, any questions for Chief?
I have one, Chris. What kind of measures or any measures will be done for the high school graduation safety wise? Safety, you ought to call.
We're not set up.
Mr. Price, is this something we should discuss in, in executive session, security measures?
You can, if you like.
I feel, I feel, I think that it would be appropriate to discuss those kinds of safety measures in the budget.
Okay, question I put out there. I'm talking about personnel.
No, no, no.
No, you're, under the sunshine law, you're now allowed to discuss security matters that, if we're publicly known, could affect safety and safety strategy in our villages.
I believe now all about transparency, but in terms of safety, if we're going to talk about safety measures and rather maybe the person that wants to undermine those safety measures not have access to her information.
Did I do wrong to ask that question, Mr. Plisco?
No. It's up to the board's discretion whether you want to do it executive or not, if you have the opportunity to do it.
Other, Mr. Colby, go ahead.
Just one question, is any of the states going to clear bags, plastic bags, that help speed up the process? Book bags, backpacks?
We talked about that at the elementaries, if we put the walkthrough scanners in down there, that may be an option we need to do.
But are any school districts, are you aware?
Oh, yeah, there's several around.
Good point, and we did discuss that, Mr. Colby, that not having bag scanners, that the elementary would use either a clear book bag or a mesh. And I think Mrs. Beatzak and Mr. Hutchinson, I thought that we could make them available through the school, they could purchase some through the school. We wouldn't make money off of it, but it would be available to parents to purchase for their kids to have an Albert Galvin clear book bag or a mesh bag so you can see what's in it.
Don't they be a good idea anyway for those children who do not have any backpacks?
We historically have bought them. We, in order to start that last year, I sent them off as well now in clear, but there was no provisions for, say, at that point. And so sometimes the right of passage is to get your child their own book bag, it's their own. So I noticed in my elementaries that not many were using the clear, even if we purchased them, because it wasn't the rule at the time. That's all. But we can get them, they're reasonable.
But I think if you're going to make the rule, you need to do it sooner than later. They'd come July, or it may be for August, and they're aware of what they need to do.
We can discuss it and then do something in May.
At the May's, May's meeting, so parents go before the end of the year, we can tell that this is what, you know, book bag policy would be for elementary centers, elementary schools.
They make a mesh book bag that you can see through as well as a clear one.
Okay, other administrators, in your package, we talked briefly last month about the PSBA policy system to merge the employee sections, and now we have three different sections for professional, unprofessional, and so on. Those policies could all be merged into one policy, and it would also update all district policies at the same time. The cost of that would be $1,650. So I will have that on the agenda for Wednesday night to approve the PSBA policy system merger. Also, dental provider interest, we sent out a letter. We did get Fairchance dental arcs. There are two dentists there, Dr. Beam and Dr. Bean, it's a husband and wife team. So they are happy to provide that service. So I believe that will also be on the agenda to approve them as our dental provider. And just a reminder, I know I've mentioned a few times about the roundtable discussion with Senator Stefano and Representative Pam Snyder and Matt Dowling's offices. That is the 24th, that is unlikely to change. I know the first two dates have changed due to things that come up with Senator Stefano. So I would, I will have my administrative team there, and I would like to have some representation over the board, if I can have, you know, two or three people. I know there's not a whole lot of room, and I know we don't want to have a forum at that, at that meeting. So if, if Mrs. Swainy, if you could sign?
Yes, I would be there.
You know, I mean, I think there were several people.
I'd love to talk about it and see how you all felt, you know, just decide amongst yourselves.
So I would like to have two or three people, you know, represent there to listen to the discussion, okay? And I have financial, Denise Sheets is not here, but we do have Andy, is there anything other financial that you need to discuss and open forum?
Well, we are working on the information, which is fact, five years ago in Way State. We're also looking at next year's budget, see what we can to possibly cut some areas. And just as importantly, we're looking at this year's, we're seeing where we're at on our forecasting, so it's two important things on both budgets, this year's budget is just as important as next year's.
Any questions for Andy? Okay. I think we'll take a brief break, and we have several items for executive session. So at this time...
Those would be involving personnel, collective bargaining, and security.
And student confidentiality.
You got student confidentiality, remember?
Great, thank you.